With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. McDermott, here. Mr. McGinnley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Logan.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
I move that we accept agendas presented.
Sir, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Accepted. Alright, the agenda is accepted. We'll have public comment on voting session agenda items, please. We have two slips. First, we have Tom Dombrowski. Your non-agenda? Okay, alright. Oh, no, that's okay. Jamie Walsh. Sir, are you an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
That's regarding the budget, correct?
No. That's, that's gonna be on the work session.
On the works? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yep, no problem. That's okay. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items only? Anybody on the Zoom? No? Okay. Alright, we'll move into the, uh, the agenda. Motion to approve the minutes of the November 9th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt the resolution approving an agreement with Newport Township for the Luzerne County Treasurer to collect Newport Township taxes.
So move.
Move. Second. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus.
Aye, or yeah, yes, I apologize.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Radel.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yeah.
Mr. Logan.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, uh, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items. Mr. Dombrowski.
The 212 vacant positions, uh, county has right now. The public doesn't know how long specifically they've been vacant each one. I know the salaries for each one, so I just did a little bit of math and, if the average salary for each person was thirty-five thousand per year times two twelve is seven point four two million. And forty-five thousand per year times the same number is nine point five four million. So the question I have is, uh, you know, specifically, Mr. Swetts, how much of a surplus we're running this year? Cause common sense would say we have a surplus because of this. But again, not all of these people's positions were vacant for an entire year, but you have a general idea of the surplus right as of today, cause we're almost at the end of the year.
Is that the end of your public comment?
Yeah, that's my question to you.
But you have anything else you want?
No, I just wanna see what the answer is.
Well, I think the answer is, and for you and for the public, you know, they're not all general fund a hundred percent positions. Uh, the agency positions are twenty percent, ten percent, five percent. I think, I just answered that.
Can I just ask, what do you mean by that?
So, one hundred percent of the salary is not paid by the general fund. The tax increase comes out of the general fund. So if somebody got paid forty thousand dollars and ninety percent was paid by federal and state, this body pays four thousand dollars of their salary.
Oh.
So, I understand your comment and the numbers are correct. It's a large number, but they're not all a hundred percent general fund. Secondly, and the general fund, there's probably only thirty or forty of those two hundred. So while it's still a large number, a lot of them are in the agencies where it's not a hundred percent. So while it sounds like it'd be seven million, it's nowhere near that amount. Historically, if you look at last year's audit, it was about two million on the general fund side. And we've already negotiated five contracts and we're in the process of negotiating more, which gives starting increases. So, it's not gonna be that much. Do I have an exact number? No. Is it late in the year? Yes. But we're doing, we did five contracts and stuff, three more to do.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna have a surplus, you feel, but it won't be that much.
I don't know if I'll say there's gonna be a surplus, but I'll clearly say it's not gonna be seven million.
Yeah.
And we've had a surplus historically. I'll agree with that.
Right. I think Jason was saying, last, last four years or the last five, right?
Three, the last four, four, the last five, one of the years we didn't.
Right.
Yes.
Okay then.
Thank you. Jamie Walsh.
Good evening. Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I spoke last meeting, uh, cause I know that you're considering a budget, uh, tax increase for the taxpayers. My brother and I are in the construction business. We own a seamless gutter company in the area. And that is just one area. Our material costs have gone from a dollar ninety a pound for aluminum to four dollars and twenty-five cents a pound. What that means to the average individual, no one looks at their house and says, boy, I would really like to put new gutters on this year. It's a need, it's a necessity. And I think what's happening and what I see from going out to the public and doing bids for people is they're doing, they're putting Band-Aids on their home now, because they can't afford what we have currently. And, you know, they're saying that there's eight percent inflation. I don't know anything that I was buying two years ago that's gone up eight percent. It's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent. We have ARP funds, ninety-six million dollars. Instead of a tax increase, this community needs, this community, especially the senior citizens, they need a tank of heating oil this year. I mean, if you guys can look at that, instead of even considering a tax increase, going back to the two thousand twenty budget, starting with that, move forward. And listen, if anybody in here is in business, we've all had to do more with less resources in the last two years to try to keep things under control. It is the responsibility of all of you to do more with less. And if, if we can't figure out a way to do that, every other small mom and pop business had to do it. We couldn't just go and say, hey, you gotta pay extra. So, I'm urging you to please think this through. The senior citizens are, are getting run out of their homes right now because they can't put heating oil in their homes. That is not what we want in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Carr.
Good afternoon. Jason Carr, Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania. Jamie makes a great point. I can't believe the numbers that he just gave out. I just had gutters, I got a estimate for my house, thirty thousand dollars for gutters, seamless gutters, unimaginable, uh, from a national chain. But, uh, that is true. Things haven't gone up eight percent, they've gone up a hundred. But just so, uh, tonight, the viewing audience understands what's happening here at council. Their expert, this council is expert at misleading the public and, you know, putting up smokescreens. But, uh, there are two hundred and twelve open employment positions right now in the county. That means that salaries aren't being paid out, even though it may only be forty coming from the general budget. Still an enormous amount of money. Five consecutive years, this county has run a budget surplus that totaling over sixteen million dollars. Where has that money gone? Sixteen million dollars, how's it been accounted for? So not only do we have those two items, there's ninety-six million dollars that has been unspent from the American Rescue Plan Fund. Ninety-six million dollars is still available to be spent to try to deter any, uh, costs possibly, depending on what the rules are. We understand that. To help ease the burden of the county budget on the taxpayers. And lastly, uh, there, last week, the county just closed on a fifty-five million dollar road and bridge, you know, line of credit through the LSA, which is, is not even being paid by the county. It's being paid through gambling funds. So, with all that money, almost, what are we talking about? A hundred and fifty million? No, almost two hundred million dollars of unspent and unaccounted for funds. And we're talking about a tax increase. So I've come up with some solutions. I thought about eliminating some positions in the county. And first, we should start by getting rid of the Luzerne County Visitor Bureau. That seems to be one of the biggest jokes that we perpetrate here in the county. So let's eliminate Alan Stout. Let's eliminate Beth Gilbert McBride. Let's eliminate Emily Cook. Let's eliminate Angela Gavlick. Let's eliminate Jennifer Pecora. Let's eliminate Vito De Luca. Let's eliminate Harry Skeen. And let's eliminate Brian Swetts. That will save us approximately another two million dollars in the budget. And I think the county would run just as well if they weren't employed by the county.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to first start out by saying, as far as the LSA infrastructure alone, the county has been, uh, the county's been approved by the state, uh, the CFA last week. So, that money is now, uh, able to be on. And I would hope that the county, uh, would, uh, use that, you know, like, uh, set aside a project list, uh, of needed projects. Because that was, the, the initial application was because to get the, uh, LSA loan approved. So you guys can actually, uh, put forward a project list of needed projects, uh, to your discretion. Also, I would like to, uh, let you know, if you could ask the district attorney a question as far as this budget goes with respect to the opioid settlement and the, um, and the, uh, drug seizure money to be utilized for processing of, uh, of, you know, arrest or, uh, suspects for arrested for opioid, uh, trafficking. So that way, remember, uh, Mr. Hindmarsh made his presentation that he needed, uh, equipment for processing, uh, suspects through the courts. So I was wondering if you could ask the district attorney or if Mr. Swetts had the answer to that question from the courts from last week, if that money could be utilized. Uh, also with respect to the ARPA money, I would suggest that that money be used. Also, uh, remember last year when the homestead exemption was brought up, uh, an idea by a former councilman. I think that homestead, uh, restoration of the homestead should be put on the table, uh, for the seniors, for this, for this upcoming tax year. Because, uh, if you, unless you wanna tax a lot of seniors out of their homes, uh, next year, I think that should be put on the table as a, as a legitimate use. As, uh, we all know, the ARPA final rule, uh, states that, uh, the homestead can be brought up. So, uh, and also if, uh, according to the other public comments, I think what should be also done is weatherization should be allowed, uh, to be brought back, uh, to the county community development, uh, to be administered through them as it was in the past, uh, years. So those, those suggestions I would have. And, uh, the rest, I'll wait for the final public comment after the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Vivian Krydler-Lacina?
Hi, everybody. My name is Vivian Krydler-Lacina. And my name is Vivian Krydler-Lacina. And I'm from Nesskepek Township. The tax is raising them, the elderly, and I know this is repetitious from everybody. But there's an issue. People are having a hard time. And it's not just the elderly. It's, everybody is having a hard time just paying their basic bills, buying food to keep on the table. We have a weatherization program in Luzerne County that has a three-year waiting list for elderly to be able to get a heater or, or an air conditioning. Oil. My brother just paid what used to cost him about nine hundred dollars to fill a two hundred and fifty gallon tank is now costing sixteen hundred dollars. And that oil, with the temperatures the way they are, is only gonna get him halfway through the winter. He got a whole whopping three hundred dollars from the light heat program in Luzerne County. Please, take a real good hard look before raising taxes this year. People are just, you're gonna have, you're gonna have an empty county is what's gonna happen. And I too will save the rest of my remarks until after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on the Zoom? Alright.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Alright, meeting is adjourned. Do you guys mind if we just go right into the, the work session? Is that okay? Alrighty. Alright, it's six twenty-three. I'll call the work session to order. Already did roll call, the pledge of allegiance. Okay, do roll call again, then apologize.
Mr. Venus.
Present.
Mr. Scavitch.
Here.
Here.
McDermott.
Yeah.
Present.
Mr. McGinnley. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Radel.
Here.
Here.
Urban.
Yeah.
Here.
Alright, any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the agenda is adopted. First up, we have, uh, budget reports.
Thanks, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, attach your packet is budget reports. As you can see, we're kind of where we were last year. And I guess the point of, we never know what the vacancies are going to be. And obviously with new contracts, we even know less. So if you back those out, we're pretty much at zero dollars and we have in the last couple of years. It's discussed in the M D N A, if anyone reads the audit report. It says that the surplus is primarily vacancies and it's been for the last couple of years. But, um, you know, we're at taxes of similar percentage to other years. As always, you can ask me anything at any time. You can email me later. Uh, I'll let the public know. I let council know. Uh, I move Mr. De La Sander, who is my deputy to the acting budget finance director. He'll be doing these reports going forward, but I won't leave him in the lurch. Uh, so you can still ask me. So if you have anything for tonight or later on, please send it. And that's all I have for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Swetts. Uh, update from Booth on the ARP applications. Is she, uh, Ms. Booth?
Ms. Walton.
Ms. Walton, Ms. Walton, um, Ms. Booth is on. There she is. Yeah, they're trying, yeah, she's, she's got it on this computer, but it's not on the screen. Ms. Booth, can you hear us?
Can you all hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you all?
We can hear you, Ms. Booth.
I'm so sorry.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by town.
Okay, so, um,
Enter your participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just continue.
Ms. Booth, can you hear us?
Have a meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Technical difficulties? Yeah, we, we can go back to Ms. Booth. We'll, we'll get it figured out. Alright, um, next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note.
I'll take that, Mr. Vice Chair. In your packet is the tax revenue anticipation note, uh, for any new council members or even as a refresher. Every year we put out the RFP from the team. We put the all the bids that are received, so they're in there. And this time, Fidelity Bank is the lowest. We'll be moving forward with them. One of the questions was asked about some of the money. If you remember, a few short years ago, this was eighteen million. I'd love it to be zero, but it's down to fourteen million. Also, if you look at the packet, it's prepayable. So what does that mean? We're gonna borrow fourteen million and whether an increase is passed or not, if tax collection is just better than normal, we can prepay it with no penalty. So, there's no harm in taking the fourteen. We can pay it on January third, if you have extra money, or January fifth. So the packet is here. Uh, we'll use, uh, PFM and the same bond council that we used, George Rehnaugh and Saul Ewing. He will have this information all filled in, uh, in a correct format for the next meeting, for the twenty-ninth. This would still close on January third. We're not looking for money any earlier. It's just so we have all the paperwork documented. Fidelity's draft proposals in there. And we'll have all the final proposals in the documents we voted on on the twenty-ninth. All I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, Mr. Swetts, just for the public. What is our percentage of interest at this point?
On this one?
Yeah.
Let me grab the page. It's around three. Let me grab the exact page. So on the draft, it's three point six one one.
Yeah.
Which would be roughly two hundred and fifty thousand. Last year, I think it was around sixty thousand, just to give an idea of the, of the cost difference for the same bar.
Yeah, so you see a significant increase because of the interest.
Cause of all the interest rate increases. But as I said, if possible, whether it's additional funding sources, we can prepay it with no penalty. There, two of the three proposals have prepayment anytime. So they're lowest and prepayable anytime. So that's our recommendation.
Sure. For all the money that we have in Fidelity Bank? Can we try to negotiate that still five hundred dollars?
We could try. And I, I understand the point. You have money in two or three banks, yes. And we have, I believe, ARP money in fidelity as well, so.
I mean, that's very insulting to put something like that in there.
I can ask. I'll work with bond council on it. Yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you. We'll move on to the discussion regarding the county manager, search committee ad. We should all have that in your packet, as a handout.
Vice Chair Lombardo, do you mind if I jump in quickly?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Radel.
Okay, so I included as a handout, the ad, um, from the previous search committee. I think also Ms. Lawrence put in, we ran the ad twice, so that second one's in there. Hopefully, we won't have to do that moving forward. And then also, I'll just lump it in with the timeline as well. So I put a pretty condensed timeline for the search committee on there. If you guys don't want to meet that often because of the holidays, that's fine, but I tried to condense it as best as I could. So, it's by no means a hard and fast timeline. I'm open to suggestions. Also, sorry, um, the qualifications in the ad, um, were just what we used last time. And I know a point of contention last time was whether or not we wanted to put bachelor's degree, bachelor's equivalent. So that's up for discussion as well. I just wanted that to be available to you guys, uh, as a starting point.
Yeah, there was one other, um, point of contention in the original, um, the original ad. The, uh, section that mentions, um, there shall not be any other, uh, other, um, the committee shall be governed by the same rules and restrictions applicable to other Luzerne County authorities, boards, and commissions. And there was a, uh, candidate who did have, um, who was appointed that did have a, uh, a conflict. So is that something that we're okay with continuing to include in this? Or should we take that out? Because the second, the second ad in your packet does not have that stipulation.
I think, John, what happened was, you know, that question arose. And we ended up taking it out because the charter doesn't specify that.
It also was, it also was, we were hurting, as we were this last election, for election day poll workers. And I think that that's what, that's what it was, was a poll worker, if I'm not mistaken. So, the qualifications, here's the thing. We ask for those qualifications and anybody can apply. And, and council, this is, this is what came up last time. You know, you can get an applicant, we could say we want somebody with a bachelor's degree. You can get somebody that applies that doesn't have one. But if they get the votes of council, then they're on the committee. So, really, it's just kind of, you know, parameters that we set, but they don't have to be, um, followed if a majority of council disagrees with them.
My point is, it says will possess. That's my only concern.
What's that?
It says, it says, uh, qualified individuals seeking to serve a search committee members will possess a bachelor's.
Okay. If council's okay with it, we can change it to May.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I, but, uh, the other contention that we had was the number of members of the committee. The first, every time you've noticed, was three to five. And that was an issue, was we were talking about seven. So that's why we had, one of the reasons why we had to go back and re-advertise. So we ended up with seven. Well, now this time, we've decided it's three. So that shouldn't be an issue going forward.
Okay, so the, so that there will be an amendment to say three, instead of three to five.
You've all abused the second. I think it's in there already.
It's, yes, it says, it says three to five if you go off the first one. So we'd have to make that three, and then it would need to be amended. And then the, the bachelor's degree, uh, wording.
And I personally like the timeline. You know, you gotta move on it, so.
Yeah, personally, I'm okay with the timeline. It's, I'll make it work. Is everybody else okay with that part, the timeline aspect? Okay. Is there any other discussion on the ad itself?
And what we're gonna do for the next week.
Okay. Okay.
The second paragraph on the second ad is just a quote from the charter versus at least three individuals. This third paragraph is where, actually is going to be, fourth, the committee members shall be selected from the pool. Should we put the, the three committee members will be selected from the pool?
That's what we agreed on.
Put three in there.
Right.
And are we keeping this will or should possess a bachelor's degree?
It may.
Somebody said may, right?
May or should?
May.
Whatever.
Best terminology.
Yeah.
Or just get rid of it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if you wanna get rid of it, but it should be some flexibility, I think.
I believe the charter says shall have a bachelor's degree. And it looks like Mr. Griffith confirmed that.
So shall, if the, yeah, if the charter says that, then it should remain as it is, more as in the charter.
Shall possess then?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you want?
Use the charter language, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, it was the charter says.
If that's the case. And again, we can, we can go back and, and, you know, review that when we see all the applicants, I suppose. Because that's what happened last time, correct?
Everybody who was on the committee had been qualifications. There was no.
Was one of the qualifications, bachelor's degree, because. Yeah.
Wasn't old enough?
No, he didn't have a bachelor's degree. I'm pretty sure, so.
Got into this one business and, yeah, well.
So i- is it okay if we keep that language in there for now? It just isn't, you know, mirroring the language of the charter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We eliminating the A, B, C?
Yeah, we eliminate that second advertising.
We're not bringing that back in and staying out, correct?
It's not in charter. We're gonna stick to the charter language. I think that's what we should do.
So really, the only two changes to that second ad is the charter language about bachelor's degree. And the fourth paragraph is gonna say three committee members will be selected for the full candidate.
Correct.
Anything else on the set?
Mr. Dates, you think?
Correct. Right.
Anything else, Ms. Radel?
No, thank you.
Okay.
The, on the time, we have, on the timeline that we're going to approve, it's the advertising that's published before these papers. I will need some dates. Council would like, if it wants to be Saturday and Sunday of the same weekend.
Well.
Several different.
First of all, then we vote on next Tuesday procedures. You know, we can't vote.
No, but we can.
So I think that's a question that you asked for next Tuesday. So everybody has a chance to think about it. I personally would like to see a summary of that, in my opinion.
For everybody to think about that for next meeting then.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay.
Shall possess a bachelor's but don't have to to apply.
He.
Says we already set a precedent when out.
Yes.
It also says even in section of the charter, I mean, the search committee shall recommend that candidates that believe they're the most qualified.
Right.
Kevin, over the years, we've never really disqualified someone for that.
It does say and or equivalent experience as well. So that's, you know, and have service jobs. So.
Gives you some flexibility.
Yeah. Okay. There's no other discussion. Can we move into Ms. Booth, the booth update? Ms. Booth, are you ready?
Good, good evening. Can you all hear me?
There we go. We can hear you, Ms. Booth.
Okay, great. So can you all, let me share my screen and then we'll be on to the presentation. Oh, am I sharing screens? That broadcast. I tried to, okay, let me try this again to just share my screen. Share content screen. Screen broadcast. It's zoom. I'm just, then I'll just talk for some reason. It's now asking me to broadcast and I'm not trying to broadcast. I just want to share content. Um, screen.
It, whatever you did before worked.
I'm, I'm having all kinds. I'll just walk you through where we are, where we are.
Okay.
Okay. Um. I can't believe I'm having all this trouble today. I'm sorry. I really need to show you. Let's see. Let me know if you all see it now. Do you see it now?
On our computer, on the desk.
You don't see it?
There we go. All right. We got it.
Oh, thank goodness. Anyway, so these are, we thank you all for your patience and working with us for the first round of evaluations, the pool of one applications. This is the tally. I hope it's big enough for you all to see. So of course, for confidentiality, we're tracking, we have the tracking numbers that we use for the applications. We had ten of the eleven council members participate in the application. So that was great. For the ten, for the ten applications, this actually was the scoring. I don't want you all to panic yet because when you look at this score and you'll notice that nobody has reached the sixty point. Some of the observations that we've had, just looking at the questions is, and, and this is the first round of application. So it looks like from, from, from the evaluations that there's concerns about, you know, meeting county priorities. Only sixty, you know, sixty-one percent was the average. So a lot of you didn't feel like they met the county priorities. They didn't, you didn't feel like they met the community outcome or the racial equity and inclusion. So those, when you're scoring, understand that because we're doing a blind scoring, that's going to impact who will ultimately get that total score. So right now, as I said, nobody has met that score minimum. Now, if this continues based on, because I, I want you to continue to evaluate as objectively as you can. We can always change the, restructure the scoring scale. We can change it so that maybe we keep the sixty point minimum. But once we get all of the applications scored, if we find out that sixty points may be too high, we can recompute the points based on seventy-five percent of the average total. So for this first pool, the average total, the average score was forty-three point forty-three. If we use this approach and take that seventy-five percent of forty-four, let's say when they're all said and done, it's forty-three point forty, thirty-three is the average score. We can then say, okay, we'll take seventy-five percent of that score. And then those applicants that have thirty-two points or higher, they become eligible for award. Or we can look at just sort by the highest scores. You start by the highest scores and potentially allocate based on the highest score up to the sixty million. So I do want to say that I'm not surprised with the first batch of applications that they may not, you, you all may not have from an application perspective, considered them to really meet some of the county priorities and community outcomes. But that's how the blind scoring has taken place to date. And but do not panic about the rescore. As I said, if we see this trend, you know, the next pool, we're going to show you everything again, what the scores were. If we see this trend, we can always go back and reevaluate the scoring matrix to, to something that makes sense. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Booth? Ms. Booth, I did have a question. I, when I was scoring, I did find it really difficult to score some of these projects based on, you know, the criteria of a lot of the questions. And I, I, I just wonder, is, is the, I, we may have talked about this before, but were the questions worded based on the language of the, the, the actual law itself?
Yeah, exactly out of the language. And that's the challenge because the projects still have to fall within the treasury guidance for this money. This isn't a free for all. So you still have to, you know, meet those eligibility requirements and it's forced, you know, to have that COVID impact kind of determination. Or it has to be assisting some kind of impacted community depending on the project. So for each type of project, the language is really clear. And that's why we tried to kind of allow applicants to respond to the questions to hopefully give the language that would show that they're going to meet those qualifications for, to determine eligibility. I think, well, you know, we didn't, of course, we're not evaluating, but a lot of the applications appear to be coming from a place that I just need help right now and not recognizing that per, how this money has to be used is based on COVID and the impact from COVID and or disproportionately impacted communities and a qualified census tract. And if it can't fall into one of their buckets, this pool of money is not available to them.
I had one other question, if that's okay, Ms. Booth. So when we were going through, I don't know if this was, I, I assume it was on every other person's, every other council member's applications to, to review. When we were picking what number we would give for each question, there were only like three options for some of them. One had like zero, seven, fifteen. You know, there were only a couple of them that had a bigger set of numbers. Is, is that something that maybe could be tweaked? Because I had a difficult time just picking something in the, in that range as well. And that really made it difficult to get a project to that sixty threshold.
Okay. So you see where we have in yellow are the minimum, these were the maximum scores, twenty for command, community projects. They were a weighted kind of situation, community outcome being fifteen, racial equity being fifteen, budget, which was a score we gave. And as you can see, most everybody else got caught, received the maximum amount of cost and location unless it was, um, they were impact factors. So the hot, the, the biggest, the community pri, county priorities, which is probably your biggest concern, that's the most weight when you're looking at project. Is this project really adjusting county priorities associated with the impact of COVID? And unfortunately, we now have inflation on top of COVID. So a lot of applicants get caught up in the inflation, which is not eligible use for these funds as opposed to the ARCA rules, which is the COVID related impact. So I think that's why too, you all may have struggled with, does this really address county, county priorities associated, associated with ARCA? Which why, is why it's kind of challenging depending on how knowledgeable you are about the ARCA requirements. That's why we tried to keep the questions really just ARCA related. So we take as much, to give as much guidance as we can on what, what they must meet, the kind of criteria they must meet. So the county is not exposed on these ARCA projects. And we can, if you want to discuss tweaking, the only thing is if you tweak, then you have to rescore. You, if you changed the value and then the no fold, that was the, they were the evaluation factors. Now internally, if how you evaluate, you want to have further discussions. You know, we're always available for subsequent, you know, call if you all want to talk about it. Because I know you're in round two about when you're evaluating. But remember, just to be candid, these were some of the concerns we had about the evaluation process because it's not easy.
Okay. Mr. Switz has a question for him, Ms. Booth, if that's okay.
Yes.
Ms. Booth, I have two questions. And again, everyone knows I'm not a council member. I'm trying to help them. I don't see these scorecards nor do I want to. It's with council. Number one, is there any way that you could tell council, maybe you do, because again, I don't access these. What is loss revenue only? So I'm looking at a project and if they're going to score it, because there's only so much loss revenue numbers. I understand the form is to say it fits in a track. So this is, you know, stormwater, wastewater. I think it would help them make their decisions. And number two, my suggestion, and again, it's a suggestion they can do as they may. I think it'd be better to leave it go and possibly make some of your suggestions to cur for lack of a better word at the end than to start over. We went through this administration, did this for, not with as many attachments or documentation probably, but we did this for care. So I'm aware of the process. So I think maybe you don't want to restart, but maybe score everybody and then amend at the end.
Exactly. Let's score everybody and then look at, once the, oh, everyone's been scored. Then at that point, evaluate the data and, and as the relates award determinations. Now, we can, in the application, so you'll know, they do identify the category, Brian, in the application, which the, which the advice, the council. So it says in the application, which category they're following.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Booth? Is everybody okay with that thought process of just continuing to score and then at the end, we'll decide what we're going to do, more than likely, something, you know, the idea of maybe a curve? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Booth.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Ms. Booth.
Thank you to you all as well. Enjoy your holiday.
All right. Next up, we have CEO ARCA funding discussion. Ms. Radel, did you have something for this specifically?
Yeah, it asked, it was asked by Ms. McDermott to be on the, on the work session agenda to talk about any ARCA funding that a certain amount going to, back to the residents or senior citizens and possibly using CEO to do it. So I added it at the request of Ms. McDermott.
So all of us, I think all eleven council members did agree that we want to be able to give something back to residents, people in need. And rather than waiting to go through all of these applications, maybe we can start something soon. So both John and I had reached out to CEO to see what programs they have. They did say that they have programs out there that they would just need funding rather than us starting from scratch. I think it's probably an easier thing to do than to say, let's start from scratch because that's going to take many months to do that. So if they have programs, are we willing to just fund programs? But they did say that they want a little bit more information from council to be able to put us into maybe the right, the right program. And the only other thing I could say is I did reach out to George, Mayor George Brown of Wilkes-Barre. And he did a nine point program, different, you know, ways that he helped his community. And some of those were pertaining to the county, you know, such as like reduced garbage bag fees, reduced parking meter rates. Owner, you know, occupied home improvement monetary fund. He gave that to children of fifty households. That was based on, again, homeowners' affordable housing. Home purchase fund. I don't think we begin to that, but that was one thing that he did. Established spark Wilkes-Barre grant program that was being able to help businesses in the Wilkes-Barre city to be able to move there. Of course, there were infrastructure projects, stormwater infrastructure projects. I think that maybe that would already be covered under things already done in the county. So asking, you know, all of council members, you know, what are your thoughts on getting this started? And this way we can have one point of contact. I'm not really sure if it should be someone, you know, in, right inside the county, but if it's the administration or it could be an easy vice chair Lombardo that could reach out. I certainly don't mind doing that. But just be able to kind of, kind of come up with a consensus of what we want to do. And then be able to reach out to CEO if they have a program that would fit our, our needs and what we love to do.
My, my only thought is just, actually, it was mentioned in public comment, how there is a waitlist of about three years for some of these projects that CEO does. And I think one thing that we should get is the clarification of whether it's a wait list of three years because of lack of funding or if it's a waitlist because of lack of manpower, because that'll change the dynamic of what we do when we, because we want this money to affect people now. We don't want it to affect people three years from now.
I think the waitlist, and I don't want to misspeak or speak on behalf of CEO, I think the waitlist is for their weatherization program. But I don't know if that's what you guys are thinking. I mean, they also have the, the utility assistance. They have, you know, their food bank. So we, we'd have to decide where we want the funding to go. I don't mind being the go between. That's fine. But like Vice Chair Lombardo said, I mean, if you gave money to give, to get people off a waiting list and even if you, if you didn't give enough to get the entire waiting list cleared, then you really, we really didn't make that big of an impact, if that makes sense. So I think, I think we also need to find out, and I could, I could get, I could get a list of all of their, all of their programs, who they serve, what the waitlist looks like and what, you know, what funding would actually make a difference through each program. And then if you guys want to get a comprehensive list and see if you want to decide what programs, you know, we could be most impactful with, that's a way to move forward as well, too.
If they'd be willing to give us a list of that, that would be a good help. I think maybe we were thinking of trying to help people with heat, although I know we don't have, like, heating all that. With more heating, that may be elderly. So.
I would be in favor of this, but again, I would just want to know the waitlist time and get the pool of these or the different ones. So we know specifically what we're doing. I think this would be good, though. I like the, the idea of helping some. We could help some elderly individuals or residents out with the heat. It would be very nice.
What kind of number? We talked about committing.
The original number that I had was ten million and then so, you know, ninety-four minus the sixty million minus eighteen for what, for the internal projects, if we approved them all. So there should be over ten million dollars left over. I know that there are some ideas of where that, that excess should go. But that ten, I think ten million would be, is a starting point that I'd be willing to, to discuss. And we can change it, obviously. You know, myself and Ms. McDermott are just two people on council.
Also, I think we are allowed to charge up to ten percent of any, of any organization that would be providing service for us.
Yeah, so, so I guess just so council is aware of that, you know, it's not a program we do in house. And I know, you know, Ms. McDermott said CEO would do it or somebody else, if they're not going to do it. On the chart now, there's sixteen point three million to other council members. If a project's not eligible, you don't fund an internal project, which you have the right to do as you go through the scorecard. More follow that on the sign pot. But you've got sixteen point three that you know of. So if you want to do ten, that won't be an issue by any way, shape or form. But if you're going to do ten, you're going to pay some of that ten. If you want to give ten to the residents, you might need eleven because there's going to be a fee for somebody to run the program, whether that's three percent or five percent. And I know we had this discussion when I hired Booth. So there's, it's going to be, you want ten to get to the street or you want ten to be the total program?
What, what percentage is it?
Well, yeah, you have to actually reach out to them. I think to Ms. McDermott's point, I think booth was around three. I know there was, you know, I think it could be up to ten and obviously you want as much to get to the residents as possible. So. Get somebody from CEO here.
Yeah, I, I did ask Mr. Ritter, the seat, the, the person in charge of CEO, if, if, if he would be able to. Oh, he's not. I thought that he was there. Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I, I spoke to Mr. Ritter and I thought he, for some reason, I thought he was in charge.
He's a long-term employee. He knows a lot.
Okay.
Cleaning the housing.
Anyway, I, so I, I did speak to him and he said that he would try to get us some information, but so far I haven't heard back yet. I know that you, you had also spoke to him and, and one other person as well, right? So.
They're looking for a little bit more detailed or specific from us. I, that's why I'm saying if we can get a list of all the programs, that may be great. I don't know how many programs, if you could say like forty.
Something like that.
So that's why maybe if we could limit it a little bit to.
Most important part, I mean, it's going to get the program, the question, but each of those programs is certain eligible. And we have eligibility because of the ARPA. So like you have to look at the program, the eligibility, and then compare it to what's required under this act. Some programs may not be available because of the eligibility. Some may be more than available. And I think it's a very good idea for them to do the eligibility because we don't do that. So they do it all the time.
The Wilkes-Barre city did reject CEO and CEO also helped with, for kind of help them because of household income. So they based it off of, that's a whole other issue if you wanted to get into that, but they based it off of their tax.
What happens is they make a mistake on $2 million. Does that come back on us?
That was, I, I was going to suggest that we have Booth do, because again, Booth and the liability is in their contract. And we have a cap, we have a one-year cap mounted to the council put in. I would suggest that once you get the list, we share that with Booth and then between Booth and council, they pick the project.
Yeah, since we already have that.
We already have a cost and it's already in the contract.
I think that would be fine.
If I can interject quickly, is, is just getting them money directly to residents or senior citizens or, you know, whatever the parameters may be, is that off the table? Because I think that that's what we were originally planning to do and now, you know, the focus kind of shifted to giving it to CEO programs. But if we're giving it to CEO programs, how do we justify giving the money to CEO and not all of the other agencies that applied for ARPA funding? And, and some of those agencies help, you know, the same population as well. So I just don't know how we, how we justify one agency over another. Whereas if we were just going to send it directly to, you know, senior citizens under a certain income level, you know, then we're not kind of discriminating between which agencies are helping and which ones are not.
My thought process on that was just that the county doesn't have the ability to do it on our own. So, you know, look to an agency that has the experience and CEO was just one of the first ones that popped in my mind and was recommended to several members of council. So, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be CEO, but I, I mean, I think that because we've been having the conversation with them, I personally would feel most comfortable going through them. But it could, it, it doesn't have to be.
No, 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 and I'm okay going through them as well. I feel like they have the experience and they have the, the knowledge to do that. But at some point, the conversation switched from going through them to help us get the money out to funding their programs. And I think that that's just two different things.
The only thing I could say that maybe some of the other applications we just started to go through then is it seems like a lot of money for nonprofits towards salaries and not so much help. And so if we were to pay up to 10% of 10 million, so that's a million, so most of that would be going help. Whereas with some of the nonprofits, it just seems like quite a bit going to salaries and not real help. That's my thought process on that.
Right. And, and we could even reach out to Mayor Brown and see, get, get a little bit more of the specifics of it. Because I did give him a call as well a couple of months ago when this first, when I first started thinking about this. And he gave me a lot of good information, but if, maybe we can get something more concrete from his administration. It's exactly how they came up with these numbers and whatnot.
And if you remember in the cares money, Don Augustine's group.
Yeah, Penns Northeast that are for the cares money. So there is more than one group that we do it. There's not a lot. There's only a handful, but they're.
Yeah, but there's, they did it for the cares money, so they have expertise in that area.
Any of the organizations and if there's one that can help with that, again, it's just a matter of trying to speed it up somewhat.
I personally would like to see something on the next work session if we can, if we could, from somebody. I don't care who it is necessarily, but just so we can get this.
More information when people coming in and telling us what the fee is going to be.
Right.
It's going to be a part of it.
Of course.
I mean, it's a, it's a pretty big kick if we're giving away 10 million, they want a half a million right off the top and we're giving away money to people that need it. It's just.
We also want to make sure there's 10 million needs out there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying we should write the checkout in two weeks.
That's a lot of money.
Well, I think at one point we talked about five, you know, went to programs that help, five maybe that would go direct. 10 million was broken up into two pieces. I mean, to me, that's the way I like to see that. So that, yeah, we'll help you with some programs, but we're also going to give you a direct check, right? But you, you have to do the eligibility.
Right.
I'm looking at finding a role here, too. It all has to be tied, tied back to the COVID, too, and how hard we class business for the business itself.
That's why my suggestion was involving like home heating, weatherization, something like that, where we can show that there was, you know, this inflationary thing that's going on, that, that has been obviously directly affected by.
Yeah, but it's not, it doesn't qualify.
That's what Ms. Booth just said.
So you got to be careful on the language that we're using. I mean, I have no problem trying to help people. We want to make sure that three years from now, when they audit the program, they'll say, well, you spent $6 million and it's not eligible.
The other thing we could do is we can reach out to some of our sister counties or, yeah, I think this person told them already. I, I looked at some of their legislation and there was a lot of that told to small businesses. They wrote out like 10,000 dollar checks, 10,000 dollar checks. That were impacted by COVID. Speaking of tourism in the audience, where that is one of the areas.
I think your first thing would be trying to get somebody from CEO, get a list of the programs.
Sure.
Have somebody here could give you pretty much an overall view of what's going on. People have a better idea of what decision.
Many of the programs get into the ARPA.
Yeah, they need to get the programs and then get them to booth.
Yeah.
So you need to get somebody next week, then get them to booth and then get back with, because again, we're paying them for the liability and their expertise.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Alrighty. We'll move into the district attorney's budget.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having me. I know it's been a long night. I'll try to reduce a lot of information into a general summary. I know this really is a presentation about next year's budget and somewhat about this year's budget. However, in order to understand the budget, I think it's important to understand what it is that we've gone through in 2022. And for some slides, it was a few years before. This year, even though we haven't yet reached the end of the year, we've actually had an inordinate amount of trials. We have a 25% increase in both jury and bench trials. That's an important statistic. As you know, there are only 52 weeks in the year. So that's more than one trial every week and not every week is a trial week. It's also important to note that Judge Ojello is a senior judge. He handled every single DUI case. I shouldn't say every single case, but the majority of DUI cases in Luzerne County, he has since retired. His cases are being divvied up among, among the remaining three criminal judges. I have no worries about their ability, ability to handle those trials, but it is, you know, a tremendous increase. Being that DUIs are about 30% of our caseload every single year, it's a tremendous increase in work, not only on the ADAs in those courtrooms, but also on the judges themselves. We have currently 34 pending homicide trials. Probably can't see this in the corner. It's divvy up between the judges. The 29%, they have not been assigned yet because they have not reached the Court of Common Pleas, which either means the person has not yet been arrested or has been only through the preliminary hearing stage and not yet to the Court of Common Pleas. Our youth aid panel, unfortunately, a result of COVID was that the youth aid panel was basically shut down. For those of you that know what the, don't know what the youth aid panel, it's for first-time non-violent juvenile offenders. They don't go through the criminal court system or the juvenile court system. They're basically set aside and there's a panel of community leaders that basically meet and try to decide, you know, what should happen to this juvenile? Should it be a community service penalty, other types of classes, or should it be referred to actually to the courts? Staffed by community volunteers, they have no affiliation with law enforcement or the courts. Since COVID occurred, they were, of course, not, not meeting, not in person, not by Zoom. The, the program basically went stagnant and as a result, we diverted our Yap coordinator. You know that we had a tremendous amount of loss in the office as far as staff goes. We diverted our Yap coordinator to assist with other jobs. I'm happy to report that we have recently hired another full-time coordinator. The program is about to be back up and running and she's doing a great job so far. Historically, I can't speak for right now. Today, we're just reaching back out to the panels and the people to be sure that they want to remain involved. But we had 11 panels servicing Luzerne County. There were over 60 volunteers participating. Our juvenile division, the referrals to juvenile court in 2021 was 248. We're at 270 already this year with over a month to go, so we expect to far exceed last year's numbers. We have a new employee. We had lost in 2020, 2021, our division chief for the juvenile division, who went into private practice for a substantial raise. We were lucky enough to hire Jessica Morales, who is now running that division for us. She's doing a fantastic job. She's really been on top of it, but we were lucky to get an experienced lawyer who could jump right in and start handling those cases. Diversionary courts, for those of you don't, that don't know what that is, we have all kinds of programs that divert people away from the criminal court system and give them a chance for sort of restorative justice, if you will. One of those mostly everybody knows is the ARD program. It's usually for first-time DUI offenders. You take classes, pay fines, you come through the court system, but you have an opportunity to have your record explained. In 2021, we had 496 cases. In 2022, we only have 162. That seems like a tremendous job drop, but if you remember, the courts were shut down for much of 2020 in that year. So a lot of our cases got pushed forward. The blue numbers are the treatment court. So different people with substance use issues have an opportunity to apply and they can go through a pretty intensive program for any of you that's, that are ever attended, the graduations that we have in the rotunda to get people back on their feet and away from the substances they've been abusing. In 2022, we had 13, 17 applied and 13 were approved in comparison to last year. We had, that number's got to be backwards. We had 43 that applied and we had 16 approved. And lastly, in red is the specialty courts, so that's basically mental health. And we have, we're seeing similar numbers, 57 applied last year as opposed to 67 who applied this year. And 33 were approved last year, whereas 21 were approved so far this year.
What's the difference between you had 50 some applying, you only had 16 approved? How's, how's that done? I mean, is there a reason you can only prove that much?
Yeah, so the approvals, there, there are different levels of screening that you have to go through. So we look at that again. For the drug treatment court, it has to be approved by the panel and it has to be approved by the DA's office. Many times you'll see a great increase in approval or in applications, rather. Just more people attempt to get in with charges that automatically disqualify them. So when that happens, before anything starts, they're disqualified. But we have also been trying to expand the charges that make people available. When the program first started, there was a big emphasis on the success of the program, which only makes sense, except that we started to, so drug trafficking offenses automatically disqualified. And then you start to see a number of cases where people are selling drugs to keep up a habit. So they really need the program, but they have an offense that disqualifies them. So we've been trying to expand and, and start to consider those charges, but as you can imagine, then all the drug traffickers start to claim that they need the program. So now you have to sit through, you know, who's really needing the help and who's just trying to get out of responsibility for criminal charges.
Thank you.
The Children's Advocacy Center, I think everyone is probably familiar with the CAC is run by Shannon Paduto. That's a completely independent organization that runs on donations. And a lot of cases are referred to the CAC, the purpose of the CAC, back before we had our own Children's Advocacy Center. A child who was abused was often faced with, you know, reporting the incident to a parent or teacher or guardian. Then the very next thing is that they speak to the police about it and then they speak to a psychologist about it. And then they speak to the hospital nurse about it. So the CAC is designed so that only one interview takes place and they're not re-traumatized. And it's been extremely successful to take their professional interviewers, so they know how to ask the questions that the police need, ask the questions that therapists need. It's basically all rolled into one. As you can see, we're basically on an even pace. 2021, we had 460 referrals and in 2022, we're already at 425. I know that we have over 30 pending right now that just have not gotten to the CAC yet. So we're on pace to meet or beat last year's number. Child line referrals, for those of you that don't know what that is, I'm sure you've all heard of a mandated reporter. So doctors, nurses, teachers, childcare workers are mandated when they learn of a possibility of abuse to call a number, 1-800 number that goes to Harrisburg. These are the numbers month by month for this year. It's not only disheartening, it's frightening. These are the highest numbers that we've ever had. Now, I don't, I don't profess to say that these numbers, if you total them all up, that's the number of abusive cases. Very often we have duplicate cases because someone that reports to one teacher who may, and another teacher may find out, then we get two reports. I will stress, however, that all of those cases that could possibly emanate out of Luzerne County come to Luzerne County. I've divvied up the regions of Luzerne County to the, to different detectives, so they're handling these calls. And very often, all we know is a first name and possibly a location. Many times, these cases don't originate out of Luzerne County, but it's many, many man-hours to try to get to the bottom of this. And our detectives view them as, you know, time-sensitive, because every day that goes by could be another day the child's getting abused. So it's frustrating and it's, you know, very manpower intensive. Our child predator division, as you know, is headed by Detective Vallow, who's here in the audience. These are just some statistics to give you an idea. We have two detectives basically that are working on these types of cases. The cyber tips come from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. If you are, if your computer is flagged, you know, I don't want to say too much, but essentially we get alerts that there's possible child pornography going across the internet. Those are directed to CHAZ. We have 154 tips as of today. We've made 25 arrests and 13 children were rescued. Many of those cases end up in guilty pleas. As you can imagine, if you're caught with child pornography on your computer, there aren't too many excuses that you can make, so they result in guilty pleas. Additionally, we will attempt to refer those cases to the United States Attorney's Office. Their penalties are often much, much stronger than ours. So sometimes the cases will go federally and sometimes it'll result in a guilty plea here in order that we not send it federally. We've executed 33 search warrants. We've executed 130 administrative subpoenas and 27 assists of other law enforcement agencies. I also want to add to this that there aren't many agencies or even officers in Luzerne County that do this type of work. The state police have, I believe, two, and our office now has two, and I don't know any, there's one other officer in the problem. So there are one other officer. That's five total officers for all of Luzerne County. I think the elephant in the room is personnel. I know that you heard from Mr. Greenwald last week, as you know, his office and my office share a union contract for the lawyers. Just a couple of the statistics for your consideration. These are a list of what we commonly refer to as represented ADA's, the union members. If you look at this list, the highlighted ones are people that have less than three full years experience in our office. This is a tremendous change from just three years ago. So we currently have one full-time vacancy in the represented line item and one part-time vacancy in the represented line item. I know that the budget that the manager submitted to you had me eliminating two positions. I did not intend to eliminate two lawyers' positions. I thought at that time I could possibly eliminate two staff positions because I was having great success filling them. And within the last 10 days, I learned of a number of people that are possibly leaving. And you can't replace experienced people with inexperienced people and make up the work. So I'm asking the council not cut any of my positions. I'm afraid of a lag time. As it is, we're shorthanded and I'm going to have to now retrain two more people into the, their more experienced administrative assistant positions. Uh, into the, their more experienced administrative assistant positions. Uh, the unrepresented A D As, so the non-union A D As, this is a list of exactly who they are, myself, my first assistant chief deputy. Our two deputy D As, plus two division chiefs, we currently have two division chief vacancies. Uh, for my purposes, I don't really distinguish between the represented and unrepresented line items. I also learned today that one of my part-timers might be leaving, so that's a potential to have. Five vacancies in, in my lawyer's office when not that long ago I only had two. Uh, it can cha- can change just that quickly. Uh, the division chief vacancies, these are.
You have two, two vacant, is that means you normally have four?
I have a to- total of four. Now, what that generally means, you know, and you saw the, the youth in my staff, I shouldn't say youth, I should say maybe inexperienced, but. I would naturally prefer to fill the division chief vacancies from someone inside the office. Because you know how the inside of the office runs and how this courthouse runs. Whereas if I get somebody from North Hampton County, they might have experience in prosecution, but won't know the system. And part of their job is to assign the cases, you know, to the lawyers that could handle them and also adjust appropriately for caseloads. I know one of the things Mr. Greenwald talked about was, you know, the number of cases per lawyer. And while that's true, I think my last calculation was two hundred and forty-four cases per lawyer, if you counted every lawyer, including me. Well, naturally, not all of us carry a caseload. Uh, most of us do, even my supervisors, most of them carry caseloads because we just can't do it any other way. But also, if your primary job is to handle, for example, child rapes. You can't give someone twenty-five child rapes and somebody twenty-five retail thefts. It doesn't even out that way. So people carrying the cases with the heavier burden naturally have to get fewer cases. You just can't handle a caseload like that. And we've lost a number of people in our special victims unit, very experienced people who love the work. Because we just didn't have enough people and they felt like they were drowning in cases where, you know. You, you can only handle so many children getting raped and feel like you're drowning in those kinds of cases. This is just a snapshot of the office turnover since two thousand and twenty. Um, I tried to eliminate the ones that I thought had nothing to do with salary or COVID or workload. You know, if it was just people naturally retired, I tried not to, you know, count any of those, but. It's been four detectives, one drug task force officer, five division chiefs. Four full-time A D As, four part-time A D As, two office managers. Three trial administrative assistants, three clerk threes, and four other clerks, ones and twos. Um, so in just two years, that's a tremendous amount of people that I've had to train for the times that I could replace. This is a snapshot of our contract status, and I had, I had done a memo on this, which I think I circulated, uh, with these numbers. And these are what I would consider to be comparable counties. Um, they all have approximately the number of cases that we have. These are counties between Class Two A, uh, and Class Four. So it lists the number of A D As and the starting salary. And what we found. Uh, in discussions at our DA's conferences, it seems that the starting salary for the counties that are able to. Uh, actually hire and not suffer the vacancies that we've seen is around between sixty-two thousand and sixty-five thousand. We've had a lengthy discussion about the fact that, um, I think the starting salary in Philadelphia, for example. Is just under seventy, which doesn't seem to add up because it's much more expensive to live in Philadelphia than it is here. Uh, the issue, I think, that at least the result that we theorize is the answer to that is. After two or three years in the Philadelphia D A's office, you can join a major law firm and probably make two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's not the same situation in Luzerne County. Uh, another thing about Luzerne County, I think, is that people that I've seen come into the office, unlike when I started. When I started, it was a stepping stone job and you were gonna go, go out on your own or do criminal defense. Um, it isn't like that anymore. These people are, are looking, a majority of them, not all, but are looking to make it a career. And what ends up happening is after a few years, you know, if you wanna get married or have a family or, you know, buy a new car. The money just isn't there, and it seems like just about everybody in the courtroom is making more money than you. Uh, just about everybody in the surrounding counties is making more money than you, and they have a lot less work, to be perfectly honest. We have to be one of the busiest counties in the whole state. So, um, it's an issue, and as you know, I'll get to this a little bit later. The A D A's contract is up this year, so it's something that, you know, we're gonna have, you know, discussions about. And we're gonna hope to reach some kind of agreement that everybody can live with. I know that every time we go to arbitration, it's really expensive. The county doesn't seem to do too well, and it seems like the H, A D As don't do too well either. Um, I'd like to bring up a couple of the grants that are out there that are kind of a big deal for our office, and some of them are a big deal for everybody, of course. Uh, the opioid settlement money, as I understand it, we've received one payment already with one point eight, I think. And we're about to or have received the second payment. We're getting a double payment this year. I've met extensively with the now former county manager and with Ryan Hogan. Don't know if you all know him, but he's, you know, Luzerne Wyoming County Drug and Alcohol. Okay, then, then I'm sure you do. So I've gotten to know him very well, and we put a lot of work into what this money can be used for, and, you know, who, whom it could help, really. In my office, I've asked for two detectives to work opioid-related cases. As you know, we have. Uh, Luzerne County Drug Task Force, which our office runs, which is completely funded by forfeitures. Uh, I would like, you know, I, I have asked the county to add to that, because if I had ten more detectives, I could arrest for those cases around the clock. Um, I think this is a good way to use money that resulted from this opioid crisis. To assist those detectives without putting it on the taxpayers. Uh, and I've asked not just for the detectives, but hiring people, of course, costs money in the way of. They need guns and vests and computers and cars and all the equipment that goes along with that. So. I would like to, you know, avert any of that coming from the taxpayers. Let's use this opioid money for that purpose. I've talked to Ryan extensively about an intelligence analyst to review patterns, not just in drug activity, but need for services. We're seeing a major gap between the services that are available to people who are addicted to opioids and us getting, you know, making that match. So one of, one of the jobs of this individual who would either be employed by my office or his office is to make that link. Every case that comes in gets analyzed and we know what services should be used for what person.
Um, Mr. Samuel, don't you go back to that slide for a minute? And notice in parentheses, you said approved by counsel, not yet funded. The operating money, that you said, and we did. Counsel has not assigned that anywhere, it's not included in the budget. So we can't go ahead and prove something that we don't have money assigned it.
So in an executive session in.
Executive session, there's no votes.
I understand that, but it's my, I understand that it has always been the case. As I've created positions in my time here and with Stephanie before, is I make a presentation and a request to counsel. Which has been done even by email, and then it's sent out to counsel by H R, and then counsel has five days to approve it or disapprove it. And a caveat on these positions was obviously when the money became available. So. Uh, my understanding is that I reviewed the emails that was sent to H R. So I assume that it was sent to counsel right after, because that has been the practice. But at any rate, you know.
Just so we, you know, there's a process that has to be completed, if indeed you wanna fill in that role.
And I do, and, you know, I'll, I'll try to move it forward, because what I don't want to happen is to sit on this money. Uh, if counsel is going to approve its use to fight the opioid epidemic, I'd like to use, use it the minute that it's available for that purpose. Uh, another thing I, I know that we've spoke about at other meetings is, um. A public relations officer and health services officer. So this would be a joint effort between my office and Luzerne Wyoming County Drug and Alcohol. Uh, they would basically be assigned as a full-time job to go around to the schools throughout Luzerne County. I didn't realize this before I looked it up. There are twelve school districts in Luzerne County, each of which have not less than three buildings. So that you could literally talk to students all the time. Another thing I've, I've discussed with a number of people who have experience in this area, high school is almost too late to talk to them. So we basically wanna start, you know, maybe ninth grade, but certainly five through eight. And see how we can schedule these talks, but it would be people, uh, that are professionals that. Know how to reach people of a certain age and also bring in other kinds of speakers, you know, we were, I was just on a panel. At the, uh, Arena of Family Services Association, and we had a mother who lost a son. Who I thought was just a very powerful speaker. It was very hard for her to come out. But she felt compelled to come out if she could save one life, and those are the types of speakers that I think the students need to hear from. So not just the professionals with a message, but the people who have suffered through these types of losses. Uh, I know we've had another, a number of discussions about the shortage in the coroner's office. Um, we only begun these discussions with the possibility of funding some deputy coroners who would come out, as you know. Every opioid overdose gets a coroner, really gets an investigation because of the possibility of arresting for drug delivery resulting in death. If we could help assist the coroner's office without putting that on the backs of taxpayers and the money is available and approved by counsel. I think that it, it's a valid use under the parameters. So that's something that I would like to see, you know, have a further discussion on with everyone. Uh, that's supposed to be prison personnel. Uh, one of the other issues, we know we have shortages at the prison. If we could assist the prison, uh, in evaluating personnel that maybe shouldn't go into incarceration, but should go into get services. Um, Ryan and I have spoken about the possibility of having someone there that can do screenings. And another thing we see at the prison, which is a tremendous burden on our local police officers. They take their, the arrestee to the prison, who is either, you know, diagnosed with an injury or a pregnancy or a possible men, possible mental deficiency. The police officer then has to transport the person to the hospital, wait till someone becomes available. They're basically taken off their shift. Four, six, eight hours sometimes before they can get back to the prison. So if this is funding that could possibly help, and obviously, you know, we'd have to get into the technicalities of it, but if this is funding that can assist in that way. Um, then hopefully the council will see that that's a good use of, of that fund. Um, some of the other topics that just came up, but we haven't got into, uh, really the, the inner details of it. We've talked for years about getting a central booking station that involves, you know, a lot of work and a lot of money. But that could be another place where, number one, we not only process the defendants and the local police don't have to wait. It would basically be staffed by, uh, local officers. The law provides for a central booking fee that the courts could pass, that every defendant has to pay. Be collected by probation, put into a separate fund that pays officers overtime to, to staff this twenty-four hours, which is exactly how it's run in Lackawanna County. But we could also have personnel there, uh, that evaluate people who needs mental health. Uh, pro- uh, men- mental health assistance, additional evaluations, uh, there's other types of housing, you know, if you, if someone has to go into detox, for example. And other, other treatment, uh, resources. Uh, and lastly, the thing that just most, most recently came up. The, um, public defenders who I know have asked for similar increases and their, their contract is also up. Half of their cases at least have to deal with people with opioid problems. I believe the funding can probably used to help the county fund whatever increases come as a result of this contract. So I think that's an area that is worth exploring, uh, on, on both sides of that. The ARCA funding, uh, I asked for to utilize for two additional dedicated child abuse detectives. You saw the numbers earlier, there's absolutely no question. The numbers we're seeing, uh, the cases have doubled since COVID. We don't have the manpower to attack this problem. Um, so it's, it clearly falls within the ARCA funding. It's a problem that was entirely caused by COVID. Uh, because children were locked down at home, they weren't getting to the personnel that would see that they're being abused, the teachers, the guidance counselors. Um, the coaches, they weren't, uh, the daycare centers, they were locked down at home very often when they're abusers. Uh, again, I would ask for all the costs associated with those, because hiring detectives is expensive. Uh, we have modern evidence and defense technologies. I would like to see the detectives for Luzerne County have dash cameras. Um, if, if incidents are happening, uh, you'll be surprised at the number of times that, uh, the defendants lie. And the truth is caught on a dash camera. Um, I think our detectives warrant that kind of protection also, where every major event throughout the county. I think that's something that would be very useful if it could be funded through ARCA funding. Um, additionally, with the uptick in school shootings, um, I think we'd be behind the curve if we weren't prepared for such. An event, God forbid, one would happen. I think you've probably seen that we've had trainings in Mountain Top. We have upcoming. Active shooter trainings in the Dallas School District. This is something that we're gonna bring throughout the county, but. Uh, we don't, we don't even have the necessary fire, uh, firepower for our detectives, all of our detectives to respond. And if they're the closest by, they're, they're definitely gonna be going. So that's something I'd like to see. Uh, lock, locking mechanisms, um, are, that's a, a manner of being, once you have the weapons. They have to be in your car for them to be useful, which means they have to be locked up. Uh, indoor security, that's mostly courthouse stuff. We keep sensitive information in each office. Many of you probably know, we're not in the same room, we're spread out all throughout the courthouse. So every room needs to be secured with only access for D A's office personnel. Um, this last grant is one I wanted to talk about, it was brought to our attention by Congressman Cartwright. Uh, he asked us to put in for it because he thought it would apply to Luzerne County. We were notified earlier this year that, uh, at least by Facebook posts and, uh, electronic mail that we were awarded the grant. We just haven't gotten any details on it, but it's two point five million dollars. It funds a contingent of first responders, basically an emergency services unit. Uh, we've seen, uh, drastic increase in what we refer to as barricaded gunman. Uh, people that sometimes with hostages, sometimes on their own, are barricaded in a residence or other building. And we have to call out special officers for that, because your everyday patrol officers generally don't handle those types of incidents. They secure the person until usually P S P cert can get there. P S P cert comes from all over the state and usually takes four hours. Um, other things that would be involved in the emergency services unit, uh, accident reconstruction. Many of time, many times the accident reconstructionists from the state police are on other incidents or can't come out. Uh, we would have the equipment and the training necessary to reconstruct fatal accidents, to do a mapping of crime scenes. Uh, and assist smaller departments with major cases. We're seeing a retirement of most experienced police officers who are old enough to retire, not only throughout the county, but throughout the country. Um, so our office, having experienced detectives, has to assist more and more, and we're happy to do that, but we're, we don't have the manpower to do it continuously. This will allow experienced officers from other departments to help, uh, assist. Other people in other jurisdictions, and just like the drug task force, their overtime would be funded. Uh, to assist those departments, it wouldn't have to be gone in the D A's offices. Um, the grant also involves scene mapping, sorry.
If you have this kind of. Program in place, and you have the personnel to operate. Would be, have to wait for the state police at that point, or is that something we can?
No, that group could move into. Our group could move in. So Wilkes-Barre and Hazleton already have SWAT teams. Wilkes-Barre is kinda went. Went defunct for a little while, they, they went back up and running. So we've had a number of meetings about joining forces so that they could be called out to any place in the county. And we've invited some other departments to get involved, but they have to train together continuously, have the right training. There are different levels and certifications that are required before you could do that. So. Once we had that, obviously, calling somebody out of Wilkes-Barre is a lot, uh, faster than calling from all over the state. So, no, we could respond immediately, uh, and we've had discussions with the state. If there were certain equipment we didn't have but needed. They would either send people to bring just that equipment or, or loan it out if that were a possibility for our, the properly trained officers.
I think everybody realizes that the school shooting down in Texas. The timeframe for people standing outside the door, actually going in.
Yeah.
You know, I, in my mind, it's just not right, but.
And that's kind of what I'm, you know, a little bit of what I'm talking about is if you don't have the right equipment to go in, you're going in anyway. And you're possibly dead as a result of just not having the right stuff. Um, and even in the school programs that, you know, it was just up at Dallas, in fact, yesterday. Um, for a tour of all the schools, one of the things we talk about is. You know, we had that shooting at Walmart, the nail salon outside of Walmart in Pittston, um, it came in as an active shooter. We had police respond from Scranton, Music, Hazleton, which seems like too far away, they could just get the responding area. Or the, the surrounding area. Uh, that's not the case. They come, as soon as they hear it on the radio, they come lights and sirens. But if you're responding to Dallas High School, does a police officer from Music know where, where to go? Like, you said the shooting is in the library. Um, so it's important to have these trainings so that at least the majority of the people responding are familiar with where to go and where to respond. So watching the training happen was really something amazing to see, but also to keep up on training so that other jurisdictions outside of that. But also to keep up on training so that other jurisdictions outside of that school district also know where to go. So. We've been working on trying to coordinate all of that, uh, which is no small task, by the way. I think I got all the. Oh, another part of that grant is police vehicles. Uh, they asked that I include. Um, vehicles for surrounding jurisdictions. So there would be an application process that have a full-time police department. But I know their jurisdiction is right now, just can't afford police cars. That we get calls to borrow police cars uh, quite frequently and we don't actually have police cars because they're not marked. In order to make traffic stops, they need to be fully marked. So, um. That's something that we could assist other jurisdictions with this grant. So this is our total budget summary. Uh, I went through the numbers and I should introduce Jerry Middleton, who is my numbers guru. As you can imagine, I do not put the numbers together because I don't have the ability or the patience. Uh, but when I need to know anything about our budget, she helps me put it together. So as I understand it, we. Have twenty percent of our budget for the year remaining. We don't have twenty percent of the year left, so I'm hopeful that we will come in under budget. Um, yeah, I think that's a testament. I think we've done. A lot of things with our money this year. I think we've been wise in spending it. And we're thankful for the grant possibilities that are up, but I would like to see us move forward. I think, I think every presentation I make to everyone, you know, we need to stop pretending that we don't have big city problems. Uh, we have big city problems, but not big city resources. So it's important to be smart about our resources. And I, I hope that council believes that I'm doing my best to be smart with our resources, but to be ahead of the curve. I try to avoid or prevent uh, any major tragedy. Um, I'm happy to take any questions. Hopefully I can answer them.
Questions from council?
Yeah, so that's a good question. What would the collection rate be? Uh, you know, for every person assessed with this fee, what would we be able to collect? So I would, uh, you know, it's hard for me to say right now because I don't really look at the court costs because I don't get that money. I can say for our ARDs, it's surprisingly high, so eighty percent for ARD fees. Um, which is a two hundred dollar fee, you know, assessed to people to get on the ARD program if they can afford it. Um, now this would involve every single type of crime. So many times, you know, I believe the collection rate would be much lower than that. But if you look at just our pure numbers. Uh, we have thirty percent of our cases are DUIs. Those are generally, you know, people with jobs. And so. Uh, we don't have much trouble collecting the ARD fees from them. I imagine they would be able to afford to pay those fees. Uh, and, uh, you know, theft cases, white collar crimes, all of those we would be able to collect. Uh, and again, it's not an exorbitant fee. I say that. Almost tongue in cheek because I realize what kind of difficulty a lot of people are seeing nowadays would be inflation rates and the cost of everything being astronomical. Uh, but I would like to think that those are not the people we're also seeing.
I mean, the other thing too, I mean, switching topics to like, we talked about fleet vehicles and things like that. We're getting like sort of like different stories from different departments. You know, I mean, like quite honestly, that, right, I would like to see. You know, a, a comprehensive asset report of all the vehicles that we have at this counter. Because, you know, that, that's one area that you might, when you look at certain things too, I think your ADAs have a vehicle now, right?
No, no. Just the man.
Just the man.
But all the detectives do.
Okay. So, uh, and that's how many. Yeah, you have thirteen now.
So four of those are not hired. So it's nine and plus the drug task force coordinator. And then we have a few vehicles that they will utilize to make drug purchases and things like that. They're not taking home with their, you know.
Uh, when the ADA's, you go somewhere, are they allowed to use a fleet vehicle?
Typically, no. Typically they'll pay, pay the mileage, um, just because they're not available. They're assigned to people. Uh, if we do have one available, I would generally let them take it. I have to make sure then that they're added to the insurance. So time becomes a factor. Um, so I, I would say as a general rule, I, I don't really let them out.
I mean, I'd like to see like, you know, more sharing of vehicles in the county if that's possible. I mean, I'm sure there's enough unmarked cars. Obviously.
So that's one of the restrictions. Yeah, so I. Just general civilians are not permitted to drive cars with red and blue lights.
Sure.
Uh, and obviously if they were equipped with bulletproof vests and firearms, you know, we have to take them out, but. Uh, red and blue lights are actually restricted by law. Uh, prosecutors. But not every vehicle is equipped with that stuff, you know, police radios and things like that. So.
Right.
That's a fair question.
Yeah, there's also different sourcing. Where you can buy a car.
And part of, part of that issue, that's actually a very good point, uh, because I had this discussion with the manager, you know. We were at a point where can we re- reduce vehicles? Is it time to replace vehicles? And what we're finding is. If you have the money and you want a vehicle, it's not available. It's a year wait. So if one comes in, you kind of have to grab it. Or you may be waiting another year till, and your vehicle might be dead. So that's a good point. There's a severe shortage. Uh, we really do have to look at the sourcing of these vehicles if there's a savings in.
I'm, I'm also looking at from a grant perspective, it seems that there's multiple grants, you know, sourcing money out there. But I'm trying to hit the taxpayers.
Right.
Other sources to get.
And that the burn justice grant is actually a good example of that.
That's a fun.
Right. I believe so. Read.
Thank you, Trusino. Go to, yeah. Did a great job with the presentation.
Thank you.
I think it was. People were watching back home also. Got a chance to see. Couple of things. Number one, I think your vehicles were being leased. Last time.
So we had a, um, a fleet lease agreement.
Okay.
And at the end of the lease, you could buy the vehicle out for a dollar, which is also the case with our auto theft. No, I'm sorry. That vehicle was purchased. And there was a question about why we purchased it over leasing it. And the reason is, under the auto theft task force grant, if we lease it, we had to keep it for a hundred thousand miles. And if we purchase it after three years, we can roll it into the rest of our fleet and purchase a new vehicle with that grant. So the decision to purchase it was really a future looking. Uh, there were four though, in the fleet agreement that you're talking about.
Right, okay, so. Do we have anybody on lease now, or is that?
We, we don't have anybody on lease. We just purchased, uh, sorry, no, the vehicles became unavailable. We had a tentative agreement to purchase. Vehicles and we had, uh, community leasing was going to finance it. So the payment would have been the same as a lease. But again, at the end, it would have been a buyout for a dollar. So, you know, we try to keep them rotating. Uh, because police vehicles get beat up pretty fast.
With the vehicles. Potentially could be buying for other municipalities.
Right, right.
Who guess ownership of those? What's the liability insurance back?
The municipality would get them.
They would take over all that responsibility by all the insurance.
Correct.
Maintenance.
We basically just have a grant to purchase it and would, wouldn't even be the middle name. We would just use the money and they would put it directly into their name.
Okay, so. Once they're gone.
They're gone, they're gone from our liability purposes, yes.
The one thing, you know, I know you spoke the other day. You know, some of these new positions, I mean, you look at your information. Certainly there's some documentation supporting. But as I mentioned to you the other day, what happens when the grants are done?
So that's something that we would have to make a decision on that time. Right now, obviously, you know, we don't have a bunch of spare money to keep funding. These positions. So we would have to make, have a serious discussion. About whether to eliminate that position based on the lack of funding. Or whether I have the ability to find it somewhere or find a replacement grant. I mean, it's very difficult anytime you have somebody doing these cases, if they're producing results. So, no, stop, stop chasing this, this money. Um, and stop chasing the criminals, quite frankly. But if the money's not there, you know, you can't just increase your budget by a half million dollars and keep all these people. So. I would be mindful of that and let the HIREEs know this could very well be temporary. Uh, but also would very aggressively, aggressively pursue other grants. To keep the funding stream, you know, consistent and keep it off the back of the taxpayer.
I think that's important, let people know what the status is as far as the funding. And certainly if you could find another grant, I think everybody would be thrilled.
Right. And that's exactly what we do with the drug task force officers. Their job is contingent upon having sufficient forfeitures to fund and. Fortunately or unfortunately, we have no trouble seizing the money. That funds, you know, eight detectives that do nothing but chase drug dealers all the time. So. That's maybe a good problem as far as keeping police, but it's a bad problem as far as the state of Luzern County, but it's nationwide. It's not. It's not unique to us.
Any other questions?
Well, I think the other question was, you know. I believe you stated the two positions that the manager had cut. You're looking to. Put them back into the budget.
Yes.
So you have, you have to put a number on that, what would cost it?
I'm going to have to look at exactly, because what was cut were ADA positions and then, you know, which pay. They started fifty-one-five plus benefits. And then the other positions were going to be staff positions, uh, which we're going to transition. So I'm actually going to have to now go through the, the budget again with a. Mine tooth come to look at the options.
We have to do some kind of memo. Document, whatever. That's going to list that out. So when we look at the budget, we know exactly. What the cost is, is the funding part of it.
Understood, yeah.
So I would appreciate someone.
I'm glad she's here.
Well, that's great to have somebody to do that for.
Yeah, certainly.
What's your, um, case load like since post-Code? As far as the prosecution or arrests and things like that?
We saw a dip in twenty twenty, um. That was inconsistent with other years because. Courts were closed and quite frankly, I think police were afraid to encounter anyone and get COVID. So. There was a lull there very briefly, but it checked back up. When the courts reopened, it was almost like it never happened. So we see about. Forty-four hundred cases that are filed here. We have about eight hundred juvenile cases. And none of that includes, uh, any of the youth aid panel cases, some of the diversionary cases. And the cases that we resolve at Central Court that never get a number up here. So you could count on approximately six thousand.
Anything else from council?
I had one thing, and again, I, I realize this council meeting, I, I think to Sam's point, we've heard it before. You know, grants are great, but budgeting finances is the one that hears about it. We create the accounts, the controller looks into that. And there's never any budget finance funding and it's not self-serving by any means. We took on CARES money, no additional position. You're dealing with ARPA, which we dealt with on a small scale with CARES, no additional positions. I'm thankful that Sam and everybody gets grants, but who's going to hear about it if it's not used correctly? Budget finance, not Sam, not Steve Greenwald. So I think, you know, Ryan's the, the lead for opioid. I met with Ryan, with Sam, with the former manager. I don't mind in this position sitting down with them, but I think there needs to be a talk of. Who's going to be holding the bag if there's an issue in the future? And it's not going to be council. It's a finger to the pointer of budget finance.
You're right, finger, but council's going to end up making those decisions. They are. So council's going to. You know, if somebody sues or litigates, you're going to see the council's names right in the, that document. I mean, obviously budget finance is a lot of input. I would like to see John, if that's possible. I think Ryan Hogan, if he could come and visit with us and talk about the opioid money and some of the criteria or eligibility. Because I really. Haven't heard any like clear discussion about that. And, you know, that would help us, I think, moving forward.
I think it's better.
Uh, if we could do that, that would be beneficial for him.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Sam.
Thank you, everybody.
Before we move into public comment, I apologize, uh, I forgot to have. Before we move into public comment, I apologize. I forgot to have attorney scheme mention our executive session during, during the voting session. So. Attorney scheme, would you just make a quick announcement about it?
Yes, we had to meet through the executive session for litigation.
Thank you. Public comment? Anybody in the audience? Okay, on the Zoom, uh, Vivian?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first off, when getting back to real quick to that, um. Program through the, um. CEO that you just wanted to look into, when I refer to as the, um, WAP, uh, the, it, the. Um, weatherization program. When I referred to the weatherization program, they have a program called, it's called WAP, W A P. That is the program that goes out to the elderly and low income. And they put new roofs on the house, so they replace windows, stuff like that. That is, has a three-year waiting list, just so you are aware of that when checking into it. Because there's two different, uh, types of weatherization program through the, uh, CEO program. Okay, the others.
Is it, is that it, Vivian, or do you have anything else to say?
Well, um, you know what? I'm going to wait on the other stuff until next meeting, since I know the holiday is a couple of days and everybody's anxious to get home. So I thank you for your time. Yous all have a wonderful Thanksgiving and we'll talk to you after the holiday.
Thank you, you as well. And, and that was one of our questions as well, Vivian, is, is. You know, with that three-year waiting list, we want to know what, what the, why there's a three-year waiting list. Whether it's for the lack of funding or if it's because of, of lack of manpower.
From what I understand, it's lack of funding.
Okay, well, okay.
I, I'm, I'm on, I'm on the waiting list. That's how I know. And they told me it'd be three years because of lack of funding.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two things. One is. Uh, getting back to the, uh, the, as, uh, the previous public comment as far as the weatherization and. Money used for the ARPA. Uh, I don't understand as far as CEO, why, why is the county going through CEO and not through the county community development office? Because the county community development office administers programs, uh, for, uh, through HUD. For, uh, through C D B G and a home grant money as far as weatherization and stuff like that. So. I don't understand why reinvent the wheel, so to speak. Going through CEO when you have the county community development office, you know. I, I just don't understand that. If, if that can't be used as an option and. I mean, they do administer a program through HUD. Uh, for, uh, weatherization and for, uh, low income housing and stuff like that. So. Uh, and for new roofs and, and all that stuff. So I don't know why you guys can't ask Mr. Riley on that one. And, uh, secondly, with regards to the U DAG money that was mentioned from the previous county manager. Uh, I just want to know from, uh, the acting county manager, Mr. Swetze, if, uh. That U DAG, uh, money has been resolved and it can be used, uh, at council's discretion. And number three, I'd like to thank, uh, the district attorney for his budget presentation. And I found it very profound in his state, one of his statements where he says about, uh, hiring ADAs. He doesn't want to hire an inexperienced assistant district attorney to prosecute cases. Because he would have to retrain them and it would take a while. I found that very profound and very, uh. Very common sense of him, uh, considering what we're going through right now with the elections office. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wish council and the manager and everyone in the audience and public a happy Thanksgiving with their families.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo, you as well. Uh, Mr. Griffith?
Oh, yes, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, my, I have a couple of questions. First of all. When council's speaking, some of them speak kind of quietly. I know Mr. Urban and Ms. McDermott, it's really hard for the public to hear. And, and I don't know if it's, we need more microphones, but. If maybe council could address that when, when they're speaking. I know it might be a microphone issue where they don't have one in front of them, but. Kind of, uh, if you, if we could address that in the future, so. People could hear what they're saying because I think what they say is pretty important and we don't want to miss anything that's, uh, been said. Uh, the other question that I have is on the presentation by Booth Consulting. It was nine of eleven council members that have participated. And I'd like to know who the two are that were not, that did not participate in the analysis. Uh, if that's information that you could share, uh, publicly, if not, you know, I'll certainly could send an email privately. Or if it's not something that's available to the public, that's, I understand. I know there's some confidentiality agreements there that, you know, we don't want to breach that with Booth. So if that's not. So if that's not, something can be divulged, I understand completely. The county oversight on the funding for the, for the ARPA money. I know there was some talk about CEO and I think that's a great idea, if we can get CEO to administer money to people to get it quickly. But my concern is, we want to make sure that we don't overstep the guidelines, as Ms. Rado alluded to. We want to make sure that, you know, we don't give CEO special treatment as opposed to all the other people that actually applied for ARPA money, if that's, if that's something that we're going to be doing, we want to make sure that we don't overstep this. I think Mr. McGinley even alluded to, we don't want to come back three years later, find out there's an audit been done and we missed the, we missed the mark by six million and have to pay it back, so. Just want to caution council and make sure that we, you know, kind of address that issue if we can as we move forward, so we don't jump into a, you know, into a pit and end up in trouble. The, the other question that I have, or comment that I have is, this week, I, I think it was Monday, yes, yesterday, we had a division head meeting with our acting county manager, and I just want to tell you that, you know, I was very much impressed, you know, we had a very beneficial meeting, we had a very productive meeting. It was short, it was sweet, people got their ideas across, and it was very the stress level was very, very low. So I really appreciate the fact that Mr. Swetze took over and he's doing his best to try and keep the county moving forward. I think that's a step in the right direction for council to put him there and hopefully, you know, as we move forward, to get a search committee, to pick somebody else to take to home. We'll get somebody equally as qualified or better, that would be great. And, and that's basically all I have for council tonight. And again, I, I wish to thank everybody, a happy Thanksgiving as well, and hopefully we'll all have a good weekend, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Controller Griffith. Anybody else Republican? Go ahead.
Our presentation, the current presentation. You said nine of 11, but once you did.
She said 10. Right.
So, it might be a little bit, there's might be something wrong.
I think it was 10 of 11, I think.
Even still, I really don't know what value one person out of the 11, not doing it makes any difference, yeah. Knowing who the specific person was.
But just so that everybody realizes, it wasn't two people, maybe it was only one.
Right.
Who knows, maybe even that one was taken.
And, and again, as, you know, we've discussed before, not every council member is going to see every application because of potential conflicts of interest anyway, so. Yeah. Yes, that too. Anything else? Want to show what you're?
Motion.
Second, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All in favor?
Don't talk to your grandma.
She called twice, twice during this meeting. Ask me where I'm at.